I'd like to call this meeting order. Welcome, everyone. And on the first item on the agenda is we're going to have a change in our agenda. So where we have item number one on the business agenda, that is going to be moving up to item number three on the action agenda. So that's just a little let everybody know that we're making a change to the agenda. And what we'd like to do is welcome Annette McGee. She's going to come and talk to us about the Mason County Historical Society Museum Fourth Quarter Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Afternoon, Commissioners. It's really an honor for me to stand here in front of you and give this report today, however, it's somewhat embarrassing. I just found out two weeks ago that the fourth quarter report had not been given to the Commissioners. As you well know, our Director is out on a 10-week maternity leave, and we're -- a lot of the volunteers and staff and the Board of Directors are trying to take her place rather than hiring someone in between. The other thing is, I'd like you to know that she will be back the middle of March, almost just almost in time to give the first quarter report for 2017. She did have a baby girl that joins a brother, so having two children 20 months and younger makes life interesting for her. But that's enough of that. I'd like to give the 2000 -- last quarter report for 2016 for the Mason County Historical Society. We're continuing our fundraising events for Paul Bunyan and Babe, and in November, our annual fundraising efforts for the cost of running the museum. Paul and Babe are stored safely undercover up at Mountain View, thanks to Darryl Andrews. He gave us the storage space free of charge. I have to tell you a little incident that happened to Paul. Paul broke his arm out at Ford Garage. Remember, we had him out at Ford Garage? And I warned everybody out there that I had CDL drivers, two CDL drivers, that would come and get them and take them, put them back, and we could have them out there during the summer. I said, "Don't you try to move them yourself." Well, one of the guys decided he'd move Paul when we were going to take them up in October to the high school cross-country at the airport, right after the Oyster Fest. We had him at Oyster Fest, and then we were going to take them up right after that. Well, he backed into a concrete pole and broke the arm, and it sat there for about three months before we could get it fixed. We won't have to go into detail on that, but I just wanted to let you know. He is mended, and he is well.
And I hope he gets well fixed.
There's no problem on it. He's in good shape. He's ready to go out into the community again. The Blue Ox was present at Alderbrook during New Year's Eve this last -- during the New Year's Eve, the last of December, and they wanted him, so we took him out. Now Babe and the Blue Ox is ready to go for anyone or any group that would like him out at their fundraising events, et cetera. Two boxes full of 16-millimeter films that Dave James family donated to the museum, which includes Forest Festival parades, historical logging operations, and railroad operations have all been transferred to a digital format for the future use and fundraisers of the Historical Society. And those of you that don't know Dave James, Dave James was the Public Relations Director at Simpson Timber Company in the '30s and '40s and '50s in Mason County. So you can imagine what these 16-millimeter films meant to his -- to obtain these 16-millimeter films.
Absolutely.
And they've all been digitized, and we're ready to start showing some of them. He was a great one for going out and getting logging pictures. So we've got some old-time logging pictures, early railroad pictures, movies, and early Forest Festival parades. This fall, this past fall, the last phase of our remodeling was completed at the museum. We completed the bathrooms, which included new toilets, new flooring, better access for handicapped, and I can also say that that was all done by volunteer labor. The ongoing -- so we are completed with the total remodeling right now of the Historical Society building, which is your building, the old library. The ongoing goal of completing our inventory is going great, thanks to our volunteers. We are also becoming quite a visitor center since we started the Information Bureau. This also draws interest in our museum artifacts, and you'll learn later in the report how many people we actually did have that last quarter. The Director applied for a scholarship in the American Alliance of Museum, in which a consultant will access the care and storage of our huge collections. An assessment will have a better access -- well, getting an assessment will have us have a better access to state and federal grants and loans. We were awarded the scholarship and have started a several-month program towards completion of this project. We have had the first session, and we'll have another one soon. The museum staff continues to aid museum visitors with information about our exhibits, assistance, genealogical research, writing historical articles for the Mason County Journal, putting together our monthly newsletter, and rotating exhibits. There is never a dull moment at that museum, believe me. Someone is always coming in for information. This past quarter now, and meaning the last quarter of 2016, we received 2017 visitors to the museum, which included people from California, Oregon, Minnesota, Georgia, Idaho, Colorado, Alaska, and Washington, which Washington included Spokane County, King County, Pierce County, Walla Walla County, Gray's Harbor County, Clark County, and Kitsap. Also, visitors came from the following foreign countries to the Historical Society: Switzerland, England, the Netherlands, Sweden, and British Columbia. So you can see, we continue to assess visitors from all over the world and the United States, and we're happy to do that. In October, we held a meeting at the McReeve House in Union, in which about 25 people attended. Janie Kamen gave the history of the house, the McReeve House, and how it came about and the grounds. I hope you know about the McReeve House, because it is a historical place in Mason County above in Union. In November, we held our annual Veterans Day program, and Lauren G., a local boy who now lives in Thurston County, was the program, talking about his experiences as a helicopter pilot during the Vietnam War. 60 people were present at that meeting, and there were vets there from all branches of the service, representing World War II, the Korean War, Vietnam, the Gulf War, and even the recent Afghanistan War. In fact, we had a young man stand up in the back when they were introducing, and he says, "I must be the youngest one here." He was there in full uniform, which was kind of exciting, really. December found us participating in the Downtown Merchants Holiday Magic Celebration and holding a John Tornow exhibit for the public and citing of our new John Tornow book. All in all, it was a very busy quarter. November and December was for -- November and December being winter months. I'm sure that I've forgotten some of the activities that have happened at the museum. However, I respectfully submit this report to you, and I thank you for this opportunity and giving the report and your continued support of the Historical Society and the museum.
Thank you.
Do you have time for comments or questions?
Sure, I do.
If you could please return to the podium. Maybe we'd like to say something to you. Is there anything that the Commissioners would like to say to Annette about this report?
Good. Great. Wonderful.
Thank you.
I look forward to your reports, because I think there's tons of history in that little museum over there and more to come.
There is.
And it's beautiful over there. Looks wonderful.
Thank you. If you haven't visited, if anyone in the audience has visited, Your Honor, if I may take the liberty, please come and see it, because we're very proud of what's happening with the Historical Society Museum and the old library right now.
And I would just like to add, good job. It's always so interesting, and you guys just keep doing more and more and better and better, and I'm looking forward to the time that we become the historic capital of Washington.
Well, we're working on it. If we could ever get land, get grants to go ahead and build, and we have to build a heritage museum in Mason County, we could very easily be with our shellfish industry, our logging industry, our farming industry, our mining industry, and the native cultures. We could have one great museum and a good tourist growing here in Mason County.
I think so, too.
And Annette, I just want to personally thank you very much, the amount of time you've volunteered to this county, you know. You know, I'll tell you what, you are just a wonderful example of what people need to do to make a community strong, and so I do appreciate all of your volunteer work, and thank you very much for this report.
Thank you very much. It's enjoyable to volunteer.
Come back and see us again, please.
Oh, we'll try.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Annette.
Next on our agenda is our weekly Commission Reports. Commissioner Moore.
Oh, yes. Okay. Tomorrow, I have the Housing Coalition Executive Board and the Housing Coalition Board. On Wednesday, I will be attending the last Empty Bowls week, and I'm looking forward to that, eating soup and seeing all the beautiful works of art that were created. I also have a railway and museum meeting. On Thursday, there's a Moving Mason Forward Coalition meeting. This is a new coalition, and I thought I would just read this to kind of explain what we're doing. It's, "This group will act as a hub for resources that represent all sectors in each priority area. We'll be aligning efforts throughout all of the different entities that provide services to avoid duplication of efforts. Moving Mason Forward Coalition has been created to provide a networking forum and partnership between public and private community agencies, community organizations, and individuals to promote healthy living and wellness in Mason County. Our efforts will support the priority areas established by the Community Health Improvement Plan." So I'm really excited to be part of this group, and it sounds like the city will have an opportunity to be involved through various policies that we adopt that will encourage safe and affordable housing, as well as the built environment, sidewalks, et cetera, more opportunities to promote walkability, those kind of things. So I'm excited to be a part of that. Also, on Thursday, I will be attending the Roads to Railways presentation at the -- it's sponsored by the Chamber. I have a meeting after that with a constituent. On Friday, I have a Library Board meeting, and sometime during this week, I have a meeting with Dallas Roberts, who is Denny Heck's representative in this area. So I've got a busy week.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McDowell.
Pretty quiet. Wednesday, the finish-up of the Empty Bowls, and it's so much fun to see all the artwork and how the kids and parents got together and designed these bowls. Thursday, my briefing with Brian, and I have a Chamber Lunch at the PUD titled Roads to Railway, and that's my week.
All right. Tuesday, tomorrow, I will be attending my BaseCom Board Meeting. Wednesday, I will be attending my Criminal Justice Board Meeting, and Thursday, I will be at Little Creek Casino gambling and getting drunk. Just kidding. Don't put that on the table. I will be attending an all-day, make sure if you do, you've got to tag this, an all-day Economic Development Council Board Retreat. It's our yearly Board Retreat, but it's at the Little Creek Casino, so I will not be getting drunk or playing cards all day long.
That doesn't happen until Friday, right? St. Patrick's Day?
All I know is, I won't be doing that one. So that completes our weekly Commission Reports, and we have a big agenda today, so I'll try and keep things moving along. Next is general public comment period.
Mike Olson.
Currently in the state legislature, there's a bill making its way through concerning small homes. It's reducing room size to meet the current building code or to be tied into the building codes. And my comment and question is, Marilyn Vogler came a few weeks back and spoke about looking at water rates and how we can adjust them to -- adjust ERUs to smaller house sizes. It doesn't seem right to charge the same amount for a one-person house as a four- or five-person house. So I just wanted to kind of follow up on that and encourage you to put that on the agenda somewhere, whoever's in charge of that. I think that it would be a great help to our community in building out some of these more undesirable lots, and also maybe speed up some of the abatement of these properties that nobody seems to want to do anything on, that with the small housing movement, I think it would be a real attraction for Shelton to be able to take advantage of that. And when this hits, I think you're going to get more of a demand from people who are going to want to come in and be interested in that, and it'd be nice to be, you know, hit the ground running a little bit with this, you know, get it on your plate and start talking about it. And I would love to see an advisory board of some sort set up to involve people like myself, builders, developers, people that are interested and concerned for low-income housing, veterans' housing, all this stuff can all tie in together with that. So I'd just like to see some movement on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Will please have a reading of the consent agenda?
Motion number 13884 in the amount of $6,919.96.
Is the motion approved, the consent agenda as read?
I moved that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Agenda passes. First item on the action agenda is going to be presented to us by our Associate Engineer, Logan Brady, and it's going to be considering the design and construction standards for 2017.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I presented on the design and construction standards at last week's meeting. If there's any questions on any of the changes, I could answer those now. We -- I did address all the changes that impacted cost last week, and they are very minimal, and impact very, very few new construction going forward. So unless there's any questions, we would just ask that the standards be adopted by the Commission.
Thank you, Logan. What we'd like to do at this time, if there's any comments from the public, this is the action agenda, this would be the opportunity on this, it was presented to us last week. I see nothing out of line or anything different from what you explained last week. So if anybody wants to speak on this, now is the opportunity. If not, do my fellow Commissioners have input for Logan?
No, I think it's pretty clear.
Okay, so at this time, I would request a motion to approve.
I moved that the 2017 City of Shelton Design and Construction Standards update be adopted by the Commission.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number two is the Basin III Sewer Design and Construction Contract. This will be presented to us today by our Public Works Director, Craig Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As we discussed last week, the update to the design that was completed in 2014 for sewer basin III and the need for that, and just wanted to again thank staff for working so hard on negotiating a much better price from Parametrics to do that update. And before you today, we've got the contract from Parametrics for $62,000 for the update.
Because this is an action item, we do open the public comment period up for this. If anyone from the public would like to say something on this particular issue, now would be that opportunity. And if not, I would ask for my Commissioners if they have any comments or questions about this contract.
No. Congratulations on that price reduction.
Yep.
It's the only thing I have to say.
Thank you.
Let's go.
Okay, so at this point, it looks like me, we do the motion.
Okay. I moved to approve the Parametrics contract by allowing the mayor to sign the agreement.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve this contract, and is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. As mentioned before, we have moved item number one in the business agenda up to the third item under the action agenda. And so at this time, again, Logan Brady is going to come forward and talk to us about the PUD interlocal right-of-way agreement.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. There was a few questions last week that I'd like to quickly address regarding how we came up with a fee of $1,000 per year. There was a question of how many times per year the PUDs actually would be getting a right-of-way permit, and also the amount of staff time involved in processing a permit. So going through the staff time, I estimated about two to three hours per permit. So the fee basically covers the amount of staff time involved. As to how many times per year they are performing maintenance in city right-of-way, the largest majority of their work is done for the city, for the LED light maintenance and installation. Other than that, it was about 54 times in the past four years, which is about once per month, or around $900 per year. The previous, from 2006 to 2012, we had an annual right-of-way permit, and that fee was 500 per year. So they agreed to double that to 1,000 per year. That is how we came to the price of 1,000 per year.
Okay, this is again, opportunity for the public to weigh in on this proposal, and you would like to do that, now would be the opportunity. And if not, any questions or comments?
I just think that it's -- I know we kind of talked last week about maybe it being more, because, you know, but we have a good working relationship with the PUD, and they do a lot of work for the city, and they do a good job, and they're on it. So I'm all for just keeping it the way it is.
And all of my questions have been answered. I had a conversation with our city manager about this issue, and he relayed your information precisely. So at this time, I guess I --
I just wanted to say --
Oh, sure.
I just would like to thank you for the clarification on the numbers. That was really informative and helped explain that. So I appreciate it, and I would just like to say, appreciate PUD.
Absolutely.
Who knew? Who knew? Thank you.
Yeah, I give them a check every single month. All right, so are we ready to move forward with a motion on this PUD interlocal right-of-way agreement?
Yes. I'll make the motion. I moved to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement with PUD III for recurring annual right-of-way permits.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, moving on to our business agenda, which we are now officially starting, is something we've been talking about, and that's an alley vacation resolution, and our Public Works Director, Craig Gregory, is going to present this.
As you mentioned, Mayor, we have talked about this before. We are moving forward with this vacation. Olson Busaka, the owners of 909 South Seventh Street, would like to vacate the alley between Harvard Street and Grant, between Seventh and Eighth Street. This alley is only a 10-foot-wide alley and really has no use at this point with the elevations that it has in it. It really can't be used for utility extensions as far as water lines, sewer lines go. So we would like to move forward with a resolution to set a public hearing date, which is -- would be 20 days from the day that we approve the resolution.
Isn't your request is actually place this on the consent agenda first? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then that public hearing happens after that date?
After you pass the resolution, the hearing date will be set.
Good. So are there any more questions or comments?
No, I think that we covered this one pretty well. I do remember there was some discussion over changing the ordinance, so to avoid the situation that we had with this one, where the other property owner was reluctant to sign. So are we -- we're going to -- you're going to be bringing something else forward so that the other property owners will each get a letter? I mean, I know this one's taken care of. I'm talking about future.
In the future, we will take a look at it and bring something back to the Commission if we feel that there is a need for doing that. I think we do need to address that we still need some flexibility within this process, but we will certainly take a look at it and bring something back to the Commission if need be.
It appears that the Commission concurs on this item, and so let's place this on the action agenda for March 20th, 2017. Item number three is a 2017 Water Comp Plan Update, and this will be presented to us by, again, the one and only Craig Gregory.
And Commissioners, in your packet, the briefing was incomplete. We had a printing error, so I think Vicki got you the right one with the explanation. The Water Comp Plan was scheduled to be updated. A meeting was supposed to be set for October of 2016. That was not done by previous staff, and we got a meeting set and went over and met with, and I apologize, within that briefing, it states Department of Ecology. It was actually Department of Health that the Water Comp Plan will go through. We met with them in early December and negotiated a new end date, because we didn't feel that we could meet the current guidelines set forth by them to have this completed. It was scheduled to have a draft to Department of Health by February 10th of 2017, and a completed draft by June of 2017. We have agreed with them to have this completed by the end of 2017 and are proposing to enter into a professional services contract with Corolo, who was the only bidding group that bid on the RFP that we put out earlier in the year.
So do we have some questions or comments for Craig Gregory about this?
I failed to mention the original amount, again, after staff negotiated with Corolo. The original amount was $216,504, and after staff has negotiated with them and cut a few things out of that contract that we felt that we didn't need and Department of Health didn't need, we have landed on a cost of $156,698.
Very good.
My question is that on your information, we had an amount of $100,000 budgeted for this, and then reading on page number one right there, it comes up with the number 156. So I guess, how is the other $56,000 budgeted?
We are quite a ways over budget, Mayor. The previous staff budgeted $100,000. I don't know where they came up with that number from, but instead of coming back and asking the Commission to bump that number up and asking for more money, we sat down with --
Let me just clarify this, because I've just said something publicly that it appears it is -- maybe I missed something then. There wasn't -- at one point, you came and explained this to me already. It's possible I'm getting older. So did you talk to us about the 100 to the 156?
We did not.
You did? Nobody did. You did, nobody did, so this is-
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think we mentioned it at one time in an update.
Okay.
But that's been quite a few months ago.
I lose my memory on that.
But yes, originally, it was $100,000 budget. We have sat down with water staff and the crew lead and cut in the operations budget and the capital budget that was approved for them this year. And we have cut, originally, we thought it was going to be a bit more, so we went through and cut about $88,000 out of their operations and capital budget to cover the shortfall so that we didn't have to come back to the commission and ask for more money.
Okay, well, that answers my question, and yeah, any savings is great, and I do appreciate that, so. And if I was told that before, then I'm sorry that I, if I forgot that, but I may have, it sounds like that probably wasn't, that number wasn't quite brought forward.
You were not given that information, Mayor.
Okay. Great, I appreciate that. Do you have any more questions for Craig Gregory?
Something just a bit more. We have applied for a couple of grants also to cover the shortfall. We won't know on those until after we actually get into the comp plan and get it started. But we have applied for a Department of Commerce CBD, CDBG grant-
Yeah.
-for $24,000 to help cover this, and also a drinking water state revolving fund for $30,000. So we'll be hearing back on those in the months to come. But at this point, we're going to get moving forward if the commission agrees, and then we'll wait to see if we come up with a couple or one of those grants to cover a portion of this.
Can you explain what the CB, what is that?
No.
CDBG.
Yes.
You should have changed that.
It's a tongue twister.
Could you give the words for that acronym, or whatever that is? Just say, explain a little bit what it is?
It is a Community Development Block Grant.
Okay. I just want everyone else to know that. I knew what it was, but I just want to make sure because when people are listening. Thank you.
So Craig, on this, Corolo did the report that we had last year. I think they did a report for us last year, or the year before. And so are they able to build on that with, for the comp plan? Is that one of the reasons we were able to get the price reduced so much?
No, it's not part of that. I think maybe Mark could speak to that maybe a little more. I think they were involved in the actual city comp plan, if I'm correct.
Water modeling, water foundation, additional properties, yeah.
So that's completely separate from what we're doing here?
Correct. That water modeling just identifies those areas providing water to those areas and their needs.
Right.
This will actually set forth what our capital purchases, or our capital budget should be moving forward, and our needs as far as shortfalls and addressing those needs. So it's more geared directly to water, not necessarily looking at just the needs of the larger community and the UGA. This would focus for expansion, but also mainly towards the city limits at this point.
Okay, so it'll give us much, much clearer numbers-
Correct.
Like a dial-down on it, on the numbers.
It'll be a much more comprehensive plan for water.
Okay. Sounds good.
So does the commission concur to move this forward to the action agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
So why don't we do that? And that will be March 20th, 2017. Thank you for your report. All right, next item under the business agenda is an ordinance, and this is regarding utility connections. And again, it's Mr. Craig Gregory, our Public Works Director.
So after looking at the annexation policy and the protest to annexation with our city manager and our city attorney, we looked at the section of 17.10.010, and the protest for annexation was only covered in the section where utilities are extended outside the current city limits, but did not address actual connections outside the city limits. So as far as expansion goes, outside of the city limits into the UGA, and maybe expanding our city limits through an annexation, we proposed to add the language for the protest annexation into the connections portion, and not just in the extension portion, and it's merely just wording within that.
I think that's an excellent, excellent suggestion, and I thank our city manager for bringing this forward. If the idea truly came from him, or it came from somebody, right? Group effort?
It was a group effort.
It was pointed out to us by our legal help that we were missing a component in the connections.
Right, well, thank you on that. So I concur, this is a good idea. And so any other comments from our commission?
Yes, thank you for the speediness of bringing this before us after we discussed it. I'm amazed. So thank you very much, and I am totally in favor of this.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the commission concurs with this. This will be placed on the action agenda for March 20th, 2017. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we are going to need a first reading of that ordinance.
I did see that on the fine print. Okay, okay. So at this time, are we ready for a first reading?
Yes.
Okay, could we please have that?
Ordinance number 1895-1, I'm sorry, 0317, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, relating to the utility service agreements for lands in the city's urban growth area, amending section 17.10.010, and adding two new sections, 14.16.110 and 15.24.130, to the Shelton Municipal Code.
So at this point, we concur to place this on the action agenda. Do we need any further motion for March 20th, 2017? Thank you very much. Next is an administration report. So I think first is the Financial Director, Noel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We do have some more activity in finance this month. In payroll and benefits, we're making progress with employee groups to get all of our employees signed up on direct deposit. Right now, we are targeting a go-live for the 1st of May. We had a few employee groups who couldn't quite get everything in place early enough for an April go-live, so we're shooting for May, but that should go without a hitch. I'm sure that'll be fine. As far as our financial software, over the next few months, we're going to be focusing on getting Intergov up and running and see how we can make good use of that product. That's a product attached to our financial software that helps with utility billing, where customers can review their utility billing history, and also helps with business license tracking. We're continuing the rollout of the employee self-service and time tracking component of our financial software, which is electronic time sheets, basically. In January, we started with the finance staff and with the IT staff, and that worked very well. In February, and Vicky, you can help me with this, I think most of the administrative staff on your side started using it, and I believe it's rolling out now to Public Works employees, so we're continuing that rollout, and that seems to be running smoothly. It's working well with payroll, and it's helping to improve some efficiencies in payroll processing. As far as accounts receivable, we now have the accounts receivable module in the financial software up and running. John Sim has worked quite a bit on writing instructions for users of the financial software who would be issuing invoices, so they'll know how to use it. We're still doing a little bit of testing with it, so it isn't quite launched yet, but it is, so far in testing, it does seem to be working very well. As far as bank reconciliation, we have that up and running in the software, and Elaine has been working very hard on that. We've got our accounts reconciled up through the end of 2016 now, all within our software. So things with the software are moving along really well. We're really happy with that. The software vendor has been very helpful, very supportive in keeping us moving along, making some progress with that. As far as internal control issues, we are continuing to work on the Positive Pay Electronic Check Monitoring System that is up and running in test mode. We're planning to go live with that probably next week, so it's right at the edge of going live, and we have an alternate system in place while we're getting that up and running. At your last meeting, or the last time I reported to you, I told you I was going to be meeting with representatives from the Washington State Auditor's Office later that day, and I did meet with them, and we talked about three things. We talked about internal controls and security measures. We talked about the 2015 and 16 audit, getting that scheduled. And we also talked about the possibility of changing our basis of accounting from a GAAP basis to a cash basis. So I met with them, and based on that meeting, the State Auditor's Office has agreed to assist us in reviewing all of our internal control and financial practices to, and they're also willing to offer recommendations for improvement, for anything. They see that, they think we might be able to do better. As far as the 2015 and 16 audit, they're going to audit both years in one audit process, and we'll be targeting June or July for that. What I want to be able to do is to complete the 2016 financial audit, or annual report, excuse me, and get that submitted, which is due toward the end of May. Once that's been submitted, then we can have them move ahead with the audit, and so we're going to target June or July to get that process started. As far as the basis of accounting change, we talked about that, and the State Auditor's Office pretty strongly supports the idea of the City of Shelton converting from a, an accrual or GAAP basis accounting and reporting system over to a cash or non-GAAP basis accounting and reporting system. Based on the size of our organization, the size of our budget, all of the information that they have about our organization, their recommendation is that we move ahead with that, and they're very much supportive of that. So I will be working on a proposal and bringing that forth, probably within the next 30 days, for you to take a look at that. And part of that proposal is going to be to make that change retroactive to the beginning of 2016, and that was one of the questions I had for the auditor, was, is there any problem with doing that? And they said, no, none at all, it would be fine, and you'll be able to roll that right into your annual report for 2016. That's what I have. Any questions?
I do. Could you explain the two components, one versus the other?
Certainly. GAAP, G-A-A-P, is an acronym for Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, and it's commonly used by a lot of large organizations. It's basically, in simplified English, it's an accrual-based accounting system which would account for revenue when it's billed and for expenditures at the time invoices are received, as opposed to a cash basis system, which is a simpler system, and it simply reports revenue when the revenue is actually received, and it reports expenditures when the checks are actually sent out. And only about 20% of Washington State governmental entities use the GAAP basis system, and it's the largest 20%, City of Seattle, City of Tacoma, some of the really big organizations typically are the ones that are the most logical organizations to be using a GAAP system. Most smaller organizations of our size would more commonly use a cash basis system. And there are pros and cons to both systems, and I'll be explaining that as I bring a proposal forward. Does that help? Any other questions?
Thank you.
I did have a question. You know, as Mayor of City of Shelton, I, it is my job to talk to the public and to businesses, and to really try and look at what their needs and what their concerns are, and sometimes we get all wrapped up in the way we do business and everything, that it's really important to kind of go out there and really touch, touch the needs of the community. And something that's been around for a really long time is the, is the amount of, I don't know, water and sewer rates. And so, you know, one thing, my question to you would be, is, is there any of our debt that we might possibly be able to refinance in an attempt to possibly lower some of these water and sewer rates? And the idea came to me many times in our business, is we refinance something just because something costs us so much to do, that we did like 100 years' worth of infrastructure and, you know, in about 15 years, and the payments on that, as we know, is really kind of choking us. So I know some things are bonds, and some things might not be able to be done that way, but I would be open to entertain the possibility of refinancing some of the city's debt in order to possibly bring some of our sewer, water and sewer rates a little more in line with other cities. And so it's not something I would be first, but knowing the economic environment in the City of Shelton, and what people are really concerned about, I would like to look at that as a possible option. So if it's possible, I wouldn't mind seeing what we might be able to do in that area.
We can, we can certainly look into that.
Okay? I mean, I wouldn't spend days figuring it out, I would just check it out if you could.
We can certainly, we can certainly look into that. I'm working right now on the debt picture, and that's almost done, not quite, a little bit of work to do on it yet, but we can certainly look into that.
I would appreciate it. Thank you very much for your report.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next is our Assistant City Manager, Vicky Look.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Well, we've been very busy in the HR area and doing recruitments, and we have a new civil service commissioner, so we're reviewing those rules with that commission, and the police departments had several changes. They just did an internal testing, promotional testing for the lieutenant's position, which we completed that last week, and I'm sure that Darren will be making an announcement soon on the choice for the lieutenant's position. He's going to be putting in some corporal positions in the department, and so we have a meeting with the Civil Service Commission later this month to go through those changes with them. We've had several recruitments, public and internal reassignments and things that we're working on, so we're looking at all the job descriptions, and we're participating in salary surveys so that we can find comparables for our union negotiations that we're up for later this year. We have three that we will be bargaining with this year that have put in the notice to begin negotiations, as well as the finance union who have put in a petition to the Public Employers Relations Board over in Olympia, this is state agency, and asked for a change in representation, so we've been working with them on that. We continue to be busy with public disclosure requests. We've had about nine this year, six of them being multi-department, so it's very time-consuming. We have performance evaluation training coming up with all of our supervisors, and we're going to implement that program later this year to start doing staff evaluations. And so, and just to finish up with the recruitment, I wanted to introduce you to our new communications and economic development officer, Andrew Arness, and he's here. It's his first day.
Welcome.
Welcome to the City of Shelton. And is it okay, I mean, Andy, is that all right with you? I mean, you know, it's, it's just, you know, easier for me, you know, so. Great, well, we got a great group of people, and we welcome you to the city staff, and so.
We're really thankful to have him here. We started the Facebook page and more external communications, and we're really thankful that he's here to help us keep going with that effort that we started back in November, December of 2016.
Do you ever do a little moonlighting, like with marriage counseling or any of that kind of stuff, like, you know, the communications thing, you know?
I don't think that's a communication.
Okay, well.
Welcome, we're happy to have you.
Thank you. All right, does that conclude your report?
It does.
Thank you very much. And next is, again, Public Works Director Craig Gregory.
Sorry, you threw me off on that one, Mayor.
Rocking down on him.
Just wanted to give the commission an update of some of the projects that we've had hanging out there since we last reported, over about the last three months. Sewer Basin III, which we have been sitting on, and it has been on the shelf for quite a number of years that we pushed forward with, and you as a commission voted to move forward, and just wanted to give you an update on where we were at with that one. The second mailing of the right-of-entry forms went out last Monday, after a month before that was the first mailing. And within that mailing, we also have an open house letter that we will be having on the 20th of this month, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM down here at the Civic Center, that we invited all of the residents and property owners from within the Basin III area to come in and look at what- area to come in and look at what we are actually doing. We've got some handouts and maps and some other things for them to look at, so we can explain exactly what we're doing up in that area. And again, I just want to thank staff for thinking outside the box and taking some of this extra duties on to save the citizens of Shelton some money with doing the right-of-entry forms in-house instead of contracting those out. After that first mailing, we have received back about 120 of those out of 208, saving around $30,000 at this point, with very minimal staff time to do so. And then, just a timeframe looking forward, the parametrics contract, we have gotten them to agree to a 30-day time limit to get that design work done, so that we can get that out on the street for bids, hopefully sometime in late May, and have bid openings in late June, and hopefully go to construction sometime in late summer or early fall for that project. So, again, I just wanna thank staff for all the hard work that they have had done on that one. The water comp plan that we talked about today has been quite a bit of work to get that contract dialed in and get moving with that one. The angle side booster pump station, at this point, has not risen to the top of our pile, and we have not taken a look at that since we first brought that to you around three or four months ago. But we hope to get back to that one as soon as things settle down just a little bit. So, we will be giving you an update, hopefully, in the months to come on that one. The Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone, the tank at Mason County Public Works is full. It is operational. We still do not have any customers on that tank, but we are flowing water back through the PRV station at Terragon, up by the high school, to get water back into the Mountain View zone, just so that we are using that tank, keeping the water in that fresh, so we are moving some water. We have been...
And just for a point of clarification there, so that is the new tank, and I believe that you have the tractor supply that is a potential coming customer for that. That'll help in that tank. They use that water.
That is correct. And we are very, very close to an agreement with Washington State Patrol, which will be a large water user on that tank. And we will be bringing forward a proposal to settle the latecomers agreement and to get them hooked up and disconnect their well to receive the $2 million loan forgiveness that we have towards that project. And we have been working very hard and very closely with Washington State Patrol for a couple of months now, but really ramped up over the last two to three weeks, and we are very, very close to getting an agreement done. So, we will be bringing that forward in the next couple of weeks for your approval. The SR3 project and the Downtown Creeks, we are waiting back to hear from local programs. That does seem promising on the forgiveness of some... A portion of that. So, they seem to think that they are getting fairly close to getting something out from headquarters to us. So, we'll wait to see when that comes back. We have received a letter back from Evergreen Safe Routes with the understanding that we did give that project back with expending no funds, no payment for that was necessary. And staff worked very, very hard on coming up with a plan to test Well 1, and we ran a very long, one-day test on Well 1 to see if the information that the commission was given was accurate. And it does not appear that the information that you were given by prior staff was accurate at this point. We ran continuously for around 12 hours at... For the first eight hours, we ran for... With 1,200 gallons a minute, which is normal operations. We drew that tank... Or that well down to around three feet above where you were previously told the pump was, which was at 190 feet down in that column. So, we drew it down to 187 feet. We could not get it any lower at that point, so we ramped it up to 1,500 gallons a minute. And after another four hours, we drew that column down to 193 feet, which was three feet below where you were told that that pump sat at one time. We then went back and looked at... Well, before we actually set the test, we looked at the Azbils that said that the pump was at 220. The placard on the wellhead said that it was at 217. And during the test, we actually called a former employee, which is a very reliable source, Nels Lund, and he remembers it being somewhere in the neighborhood of 210 to 220. So, I think at this point, we have verified after that one-day test, we flowed about a million gallons continuously through that well and could not draw it down to a point where we felt there was any problem whatsoever with that pump. So, we will see in the months to come. We are leaving it in the lead. It is the wettest part of the year, obviously, but we will continue to monitor that and give you an update when we get a little further into the summer, to let you know how that is operating and where it is at.
So, are you coming from a positive stand on this?
I think it is very good news that we have a backup source at this point, that we feel is fairly reliable, which I don't think that was necessarily the message last summer. I think the message last summer was that we were in grave danger of not having water, and at this point, it looks like we can certainly supply water if we have an issue with either Well 3 or 4. So, we will continue to run that in the lead and see how it does through the summer.
So, just to clarify things a little bit, when we were approached with a $1.3 million new well had to be put in, it was a good idea for this commission to say, "We needed more options." And it was a better... It was a good idea that we had the $200,000 fix, and, you know, we have to borrow the money, and so we said, "If we have to do that, we do it." But it appears that at the moment, we don't have to borrow the $200 million, that we're gonna just wait and see, because it may appear there's nothing wrong with Well 1.
The one thing you will get from the current staff is you will get accurate information before we bring things to you. And that was really what we were trying to accomplish at this point. We wanted to verify before we brought recommendations back to this commission, and that is one thing that you will get from current staff, is you will get accurate information from us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the... And the pump ran just fine, so we don't have any current worries about the pump? I know it's reaching estimated lifespan, but everything's going great?
It's probably older than what a useful life on a pump would be. It's 28 years old.
Yeah.
But we have seen no... No signs of any distress on that pump whatsoever. Like I said, we ran it 300 gallons a minute over what normal operations are for four hours continuous, and we saw absolutely no problem with that at all.
Craig, can you touch on what you guys did the two weeks prior? What Well 1 did prior to that day of testing?
We had it in the lead for, actually, better than a couple of weeks, where it was servicing the water needs of Shelton, and it was in the lead. So, it's not that we just turned it on, and it was the first test, so that it hadn't been under stress. It had been in the lead for quite some time. I think it was actually a little over three weeks that we actually had it in the lead, where it was servicing Shelton's water needs on its own.
Very good.
So...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we don't... We don't see any stress on the pump at this point. That's not saying, with it being 28 years old, that...
It could break.
It couldn't go out tomorrow. It may.
But it's a backup.
That is correct.
Yeah, that is awesome news. Thank you so much.
And then, a few months back, when you approved taking on the BioSolids... The BioSolids business, you asked to... For us to report back a quarterly update. It's not quite to that quarter for 2017, but we have been running for three months now with bringing BioSolids in. And at this point, over a three-month period, we have brought in $43,134.65 in BioSolids at this point, with no additional staff time and what I would feel would be minimal cost to get that done. So, it has been a process change down there, and staff has done a great job to move that forward. And we are, at this point, looking for additional customers to be involved in that. So, depending on what we get and who we get and the volume of that, we may come back to the commission. At this point, it's not needed for extra staff, but depending on what the volume is, we may come back to add a maintenance worker to run another shift of the dryer in the future. So, we will be looking at that. We have been contacted by a few different entities, Thurston County being one of them, the City of McClary, and also Bainbridge Island. So, we will continue to pursue those. We also have one coming back from Cedar Creek Correctional Facility that is asking to participate. So, we'll be bringing that one forward soon also.
That's exciting.
Yes, it's been a, I think, a great...
Partnership.
Partnership with everybody, and I think it may have some positive cash flow to it also.
Good.
We have entered into an agreement with the former TIB Transportation Improvement Board Director, Steve Gorchester, to give us some guidance on grants and how to prepare those, where to find those. We met with him last week, and I think that's going to be a great relationship. He literally paid for himself in one day coming in, so we will continue to work with him. He did mention a few things that were a little uneasing, that there are some grant money out there that we should have been going after in the past, that we haven't been, especially some preservation money. We have... They can designate preservation money to designated routes. Fortunately for us, we have a number of designated routes within the City of Shelton. It was actually pretty amazing when we pulled the map up, and even Steve said, "That is a large amount of designated routes." One in particular that he brought up was Turner that we overlaid, 100% funded by the city, that he said would have gotten grant money. The area is very underfunded, not very many agencies within our region ask for TIB money, and he said that you would get those very easily. And he figured that the portion of Turner that we did, that we would have been able to do five times more than what we did for the same amount of match money on that roadway. So, we could have done, instead of doing First to Seventh entirely on our own, we could have done the whole section between First to Sixteenth and had a new roadway there for less money than we spent from First to Seventh. He had said that over the last six years, those preservation grants were readily available, and he figured that we had given up around $2 million over the last six years, that we would have gotten no problem with those grants. So, we are excited to work with him, and he had some... Just some fabulous ideas moving forward with where to get grants and how to score well on them and even write those up. So, we are very excited to have him on.
Fantastic.
Good news.
Very good.
Tied directly to that, we are moving forward with a survey on Alder Street to put together a large project from First Street on Alder to either Seventh or Eighth that would be directly on the heels of repaving Basin III, so that basically, we would have everything on the north quarter of downtown completely repaved and new. And that project would be a large-scale project on Alder to include new sidewalks, lighting, ADA ramps, a bicycle lane. We have talked with multiple agencies in a partnership, from MTA with a bus stop to PUD III as far as providing lighting, the Mason Conservation District to provide some kind of drainage plan, where we're not just outfalling directly into the creeks, where it may be some kind of rain garden in a middle planter area. So, we have been out there pounding the streets, looking for partnerships, and they have... Everybody we have talked to has been very accepting and very eager to work with us. So, that has just been a fantastic thing, and I think we'll be moving forward. Staff has been working on a sidewalk rating and replacement plan, which falls directly back into Steve Gorchester's wheelhouse, the Complete Streets Grant, which is a $200,000 grant with no match money and no restrictions on where you spend it. It is... It's not actually a grant, it's an award that basically is just a quarter of a million dollars into your bank account. So, we are moving forward with trying to pass some... We're gonna bring forward some ordinances to change a few things, looking at complete streets, including pedestrian walkways, utilities under those, and see if we can't get that. But directly tied to that is our sidewalk rating plan. And now that we have funding available for sidewalks, we need to figure out a way to justify which sidewalks we're fixing, replacing, so that we can let the commission know and the citizens the direction that we're moving in. Just thank city staff for their hard work on city design and construction standards. The C Street draft remedial investigation is due from Aspect to DOE. It is due back from city staff. We are reviewing that at this point. It is due back to them tomorrow and due to DOE by the 21st, which is next week. So, that is moving forward, and look forward to, in the next few months, coming to a plan of how to clean that up. Solid waste. We are waiting for a contract back from Mason County. The first contract proposal draft is at their corporate office at this time, and they indicated that they should have that back to us either later this week or early next week for review and negotiation. We have put a few new things in there that they were accepting of. One of them was a cap on the CPI in the single digits. So, we are trying to land on that cap that we hadn't originally proposed to them, but they were very accepting of a proposal to get that into the single digits, where we couldn't have that double-digit increase that we were all concerned about. So, I think that'll be a really good thing. And the hot topic of the week or month, the Railroad Avenue reconfiguration and light reconfigur... The stoplight reconfiguration down there to go to a two-way stop. I think the commission knows that we were having some issues with that light down there. And at this point, we have installed the stop signs, we have turned the light off. We have a traffic engineer that will be coming in after we do traffic counts. We installed traffic counters today. We are gonna collect data for the next couple of weeks, and we have a very qualified traffic engineer that will be putting together a full study of not only the light to address whether we need the light or whether we can fully take it out, and also a reconfiguration of Railroad Avenue from First Street to Seventh, including some turnpockets and going back to parallel parking instead of the backend angled parking. So, we are excited to have him on to give us some direction to bring back to the commission, and to have a professional do that, I think, will be very comforting to all of us. And that completes my report. If you have any questions.
All right. Questions? I will say that I did talk to a number of people down on Railroad Avenue, of business owners and whatnot, and evidently... and whatnot, and evidently somebody went back and talked to them a little bit, and I don't know what all took place, but tried to explain, this is a road diet, a lot of it's temporary stuff. We are trying to get the feedback from the public on things that we do, and that's why we're changing from back-end parking back to, you know, and it takes time, but you don't know what the public's going to feel sometimes until you jump out and try a few things. And so all the response I got was very good, especially in the communication from staff to some business owners, people down there, on where we are and what we're doing. And so it's a work in progress, and I said before, it's just, we need the public to just weigh in anytime they want, you know? It's just, we're going to, we want to walk our way through so that we get the most acceptable plan that we can. And so I got good feedback from the people I talked to.
When we did go out and talk to the public, we got great feedback too, Mayor. We probably, myself, I probably should have done that sooner than the day of, but once we got out and did that, it was a learning process for myself with that, that we will certainly get out and get that word out before we do things in the future. But it was really good feedback when we actually went out and talked to those folks out on the street, and the only thing that we were negatively was the back-end angled parking. So we are going to take a look at that with our traffic engineer and see what we can't do about that and maybe reconfigure that into something different.
Okay, I had, I had three things at least. Do we, I know this is all really variable, but do we have any idea what the projected construction time will be for the Basin Three?
We are figuring, maybe Bob Towser can help me out with this one because it eludes me at this point.
220 working days? I think it was something like that.
220 working days?
And that's assuming the weather really cooperates, and that's just for the sewer replacement, then the streets and sidewalks, everything else will take longer on top of that?
Well, it may be included with that, Tracy. We talked to Steve Gorchester about maybe taking, right now on the original proposal, there's about $1.2 million for trench restoration.
Uh huh.
It's not full streets, it's just a six-foot trench, which the number seems very high. But what we brought to Steve was, could we propose to not do that portion within Basin Three and use that money for a match money and seed money to do paving for all of the streets in the Basin Three area? And he thought that was a wonderful idea, that we would probably have somewhere in the 30% to 40% match money, that he thought it would be very easy for us to get a grant to pave all of the streets, not just the ones that were affected with the construction. So that is going to be something we are going to look at and move forward with.
Okay.
So it may be pulled out of the Basin Three project and looked at.
If we can put that money over.
Correct.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea. The second thing I wanted to say is that Steve Gorchester is so well-respected in this state, and we are so lucky to have him as a consultant. I've gone to numerous workshops where he has presented, and it's really exciting. He's kind of revolutionized the way that we fund projects in Washington State, and I'm thrilled that he's helping out with this. He's kind of just really well-respected. The third thing, let's see, I kind of lost it here in my scribbles here, but I would like to thank you for, like to thank current staff for the commitment to getting the correct information to us, and it's painful, but I'm thankful that we can talk about it in an open meeting, and we're all aware of what's going on. I think it's very helpful to all of us, and I would like to say that I'm really happy with the new staff and the reports that we're getting, and I feel very confident that we will be able to make decisions based on facts from now on. So thank you. And Nola, that goes for you too. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other questions for Craig Gregory?
What was the date that it looks like you will start on Basin Three?
We are projecting it'll be late summer or early fall. It really depends on how quickly we get some of this stuff done as far as bid preparation and actually getting that out for bids, but it looks like it'll be sometime in late summer, early fall.
So are you, what if you don't hear back from some of those people that live over there? You go personally back to them?
We've got the second mailer that went out last week.
I'll go knock on doors.
We are going to send some staff out, probably starting in the late afternoon and extending into early evening after the open house finishes up after the 20th. We'll be sending some folks door-to-door to try to get the rest of those that don't come back.
Okay.
So we're hopeful to get the majority of those back. And in the former or the previous basin projects, we have never gotten all of them back. So we're pretty excited that we've even gotten 120 out of 200 back at this point.
Right.
So, but we will go door-to-door with those that we haven't gotten back later in the month.
We had like 500 up at, on Hillcrest area.
Yeah, I don't remember how large that was.
There were a ton of them up there.
It's about percentage.
Oh, percentage, okay. Thank you. Will you remind us when the open house is?
It is the 20th. That is an evening meeting. We tried to set that up to coincide with an evening meeting, so we tried to get some more folks in here, but that will be from-
Three days.
-three to eight on the 20th.
Oh, three to eight. Okay, that's what I needed.
And it will be down in one of these three rooms down here.
Okay, and it's like, it'll be just like a drop-in open house?
Yes.
Okay.
Cookies and coffee.
We can do that.
Open house.
All right. Any other questions for Craig Gregory? Hearing none. We have administration final touches.
None today. I think you heard it all.
Okay, what I'd like to do is announce that our next meeting, regular meeting, will be on March 20th at 6:00 PM in the evening. This meeting is adjourned.